Mr. Mikowski, Ms. Rinaldi, Ms. Wilk, Mr. Lambert, Ms. Crotty, Mr. Fantenti, Ms. Albino, Ms. Rosa, Ms. Eastman, and Ms. Perugini.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. I just want to mention in regards to attendance this evening, we wish Mrs. Rinaldi and Mr. Mikowski to feel better, they're both under the weather. Mrs. Josephine Rosa has family who have traveled all the way from Italy, and Cindy is in Italy. So, moving on in the agenda, Board of Ed members should have received the minutes from the September 10th Board meeting. Are there any questions or edits or suggestions at this time? Seeing none, I'd ask for motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve of the minutes from the September 10th, 2018 Board of Education Regular Meeting as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Before we continue in the meeting, I do have a slight change in the agenda. If you could turn to item G. That item is now going to follow J after public participation. So what that means is, as we follow along in our agenda, H becomes G, the current I becomes H, the current J becomes I, and then J is policies. Everything else will remain the same. Item E, report from Student Council Representative, Ms. Perugini.
Thank you. At John Tremble Primary School, the preschoolers are rocking in their school shoes with Pete the Cat. They're getting to know their new teachers, learning classroom routines, and having fun making new friends already. They are learning to recognize their name in print by using their name tags to find their hooks and a place to sit at circle and snack time. The good listening bear is teaching them how to listen with their whole bodies so they can be ready to learn. In kindergarten, students have been sharing "All About Me." Some classes have made posters about themselves, and others have shared bags that were filled with items that tell all about them and what they like. They have been sharing their favorite toys, activities, and telling their peers and teachers all about their pets. They are working on learning the three Rs: Ready, Responsible, and Respectful of John Tremble Primary School. In first grade, students are participating in restorative circles to get to know each other and to build a community within the classroom. They share their names and tell a little about themselves each time. It is a great opportunity to get to know friends, new and old. The second grade students at John Tremble Primary School have had an amazing two weeks of sharing, learning, and demonstrating school-wide expectations. To get to know students, teachers have been conducting circles in which students share knowledge about themselves, what they are looking forward to in second grade, and other fun pieces of information. Students have been learning about how to have a growth mindset and have shown teachers what amazing and flexible thinkers they can be. Reported from Polk, the PTO held its first meeting of the year on Monday, September 17th. It was a very productive meeting, and it was delightful to see many new faces. Many topics were discussed. In this day of social media, Principal Fecetti seized the opportunity to remind parents of Polk's open door policy. Contacting the school directly is the fastest pipeline to timely and accurate information in response to new ideas, questions, and concerns. Every teacher maintains an electronic platform such as Remind, JoJo, or Blooms. Polk prides itself on the open and trusting relationships between students and families, and Principal Fecetti looks forward to another school year with a strong home and school connection. Regarding fire safety, this Friday, September 21st, Kim Calabrese, Watertown's Fire Marshal, will come to Polk to talk to students about fire safety at a special assembly. In addition, Open House is Thursday, September 27th. Polk uses a meet-and-greet format. Parents will have two sessions to select from, 5:00 or 6:05. The PTO will have several booths set up in the lobby, and the Polk PTO Book Fair will be open as well. Mrs. Scully reports from Judson. The hallways of Judson School display many extraordinary samples of student work in preparation for Open House, which is held on Thursday, September 27th. Students are excited to have their families visit and meet their teachers. The PTO will be hosting a book fair and will provide ice cream as a special treat. Routines are now established in classrooms, and students are well immersed in the business of learning. Visits to the classrooms show students engaged in the work. Many have been observed working in partnerships or in groups. Teachers are also busy administering benchmark and diagnostic assessments. A Stars kickoff assembly was held to review the program and to introduce Stars to the new third graders. The school-wide expectations of being respectful, responsible, and safe were reinforced with the help of Star students. The PTO has planned for an educational performance by theater works titled "We the People" on September 26th. Ms. Lurz reports from Swift. On September 11th, four of our students represented Swift and joined with the town, police, firefighters, the superintendent of schools, and other community leaders at a commemorative ceremony marking the tragic events of that day. Swift students laid a wreath at the town memorial dedicated to our own fire and police officers, and they also met the honor guard. Back at school, the eighth grade classes viewed a program filled inside the 9/11 Memorial Museum that connects students and teachers from around the world with museum staff and guest speakers to learn about the attacks and the importance of commemoration. Seventh graders discussed ways that they can honor those who served that fateful day while also exploring how we can make our own community safe from hatred and fear. A remembrance flag donated by a Swift community also hung in the front lobby all week as a memorial, and a tribute was read to all staff and students the morning of 9/11, followed by a moment of silence. At Watertown High School, Dr. Parlato reports. Watertown High School has enjoyed another smooth and productive week. Fall sports are in full swing now, and our teams have been enjoying a great deal of success. Club meetings are also beginning to occur, and students have a wide range of club choices to try. A group of students left for a field trip to Quebec, Canada on Thursday, and all were having a great time. Finally, Watertown High School held a small ceremony in remembrance of those lost on September 11th. Class officers and other student leaders placed a wreath at the flagpole in honor of the victims, including Greg Spagnaletti, who was a member of the Watertown High School class of 1986.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Alyssa? Okay, thank you very much. Turn the meeting over to Dr. Harrison for the superintendent's recommendations and report.
Thank you. You'll note on your agenda, I want to start with appointments, there are a number of staff appointments. Most of these are related to extra duty contracts that we have with many of our staff to support the different clubs that we have in our buildings for students. There is one that I want to just hone in on, and that is, you'll see that Ms. Anna Jed has been appointed to the position of long-term substitute music teacher for Swift. Many of you know her as a longtime teacher in this district. I was really excited to get to meet her in person. Last week during my visit at Swift, there was beautiful music coming from her classroom, and it was clear that we were able to bring in a high-quality teacher to make sure that that program continues to thrive. That teacher who was in that class, Ms. Cummings, is transferring from the music teacher position at Swift to take the position at Judson and Polk, started effective September 17th. And so, we're excited to have her back and looking forward to hiring a new music teacher to fill that vacancy and continue to work with our students. Are there any questions about any of the appointments? So, for my report tonight, I'm excited to share a little bit about my visit last week at Polk Elementary School. I got to see all of our third and fourth grade classes, and I was really impressed not just with the level of instruction from our teachers, but really excited to see our students using their voice and choice in order to really participate in authentic ways in their own learning. Teachers were obviously focused on providing students with a number of choices in order to meet whatever their target standards were, so some were using, working in centers on a computer, other students were working collaboratively with partners, but there was clearly an opportunity for students to make some choices and be a part of their own learning. We know that this is one of a really great best practice and really lays a strong foundation for us as we're headed towards more student-centered learning. I also wanted to highlight that this past week, we had a professional development day where our teachers focused on high-yield instructional strategies. They chose a strategy that they'll continue to work on throughout the year. This is, again, laying some foundation for us to venture into personalized professional learning, which we know is going to yield a big outcome with our students and their capacity to meet students' needs, or teachers' and their capacity to meet students' needs, and also just really tapping into their level of interest in the things that they want to learn more about, so we're excited about that. Couple of things that I just wanted to hit on tonight, I've been working closely with our athletic and activities director, Mr. Cattuccio, in making sure that we are implementing some new practices that really get at our needs. So, many of you are aware of the changes that we've had recently in ticket prices to athletic events. I wanted to just take a moment and bring some clarity to that. The purpose for that was to generate some revenue, revenue that we need to make some improvements to our facilities, improvements to athletics. Some of the recent upgrades that we have been able to do because of those funds are new scoreboard, or upgraded sound equipment in the gym, and also at the field. However, even though it was important for us to generate this revenue, we did not want to do that on the backs of our families within the district and across our community carrying that load. So, going forward, Mr. Cattuccio and I agree that we want to make sure that our Watertown and Oakville residents are able to come and partner with us and support our students at games. All Watertown and Oakville residents will be able to attend athletic events for free, except, of course, football and basketball and ice hockey, which everyone's already used to paying for. And of course, that difference is because those are the high costs associated with those particular sports. We will continue to charge for our visiting families who are coming to see our games, and we'll use this money to go to our student athletic fund, our student activities fund, I'm sorry. The one other piece to that is that Mr. Cattuccio will be reaching out to representatives from our booster clubs, so that we have some folks who can volunteer to take that ticket money. One of the things that we instituted this year was paying staff members to do that, but we want to make sure that we're not losing money by paying staff members, and we know that we can always count on our community to volunteer and step up when needed, so Paul will follow up with those folks. The next thing I wanted to, at our last meeting, we had heard in public participation, folks who were talking about naming a part of our pool or pool area after Gary Smith. I had a chance recently to meet Gary and have heard lots of stories of the impact that he's had on our community, and, you know, the purpose of this, obviously, is to honor individuals who made a significant impact on our students and across the community. We have ways that we do that already with the Wall of Honor, and I think that it's one of the things that our town does really well, and that is acknowledging people who've really paved the way for other students, and acknowledging people who we're really proud of to say that they're a part of our community. And of course, Mr. Smith falls into that category. What we found after that comment, and we started having some discussion about that, is that we currently don't have any criteria or process for how we name buildings or name parts of our building, so that's one of the things that we really want to dig in and explore. I had a chance to be a part of some discussions about the Wall of Honor and the recommendations for that for this current year. There's a really clear process in place and criteria, and so that just helps to create more of an equitable way of doing that. So, I'll be looking at, I've already started looking at what other neighboring districts do, and also districts outside of our state. There's a lot of thought that goes into developing these policies, and so the next steps, I will propose a policy to the Policy and Labor Committee at our next scheduled meeting, so that we can have some further discussion on that. The last thing is, it's always great to hear from folks in public participation, however, I also like to hear from folks in just kind of an ongoing dialogue. So, I did want to announce that this Thursday at 4:30, I have community hours at the main library. This is something that I try to do, split back and forth between the Oakville Library and the main library, at least twice a month, to just give people a chance to informally come in and share thoughts, ask questions, or give suggestions. So, I hope to see some of you there.
Any questions from board members for Dr. Harrison? So, I just want to clarify that we all heard the same thing in that report, that Watertown and Oakville residents will not be charged to attend any of our sporting events from this point forward, with the exception of football and ice hockey.
And basketball, girls' and boys' basketball, correct. And we know that there's obviously going to be a shift, and so we'll try to make sure we get the word out, that people, you know, come with identification or something. Obviously, we don't want that to be a contentious moment as they're coming in to celebrate our students, but we also want to make sure that we are implementing our processes correctly.
I just want to, I appreciate the work that you and Mr. Cattuccio and your cabinet administrators have done on this, because I like how it's evolved. I like how in a short period of time, some feedback was received, and obviously, we've updated it, and it's sort of evolved to what you're comfortable with and Mr. Cattuccio's comfortable with. So, thank you for the work that you guys have been doing on that. Any other comments or questions regards to his report? Okay, we're going to move on to what is now G, Discussion Regarding the 2018-2019 Fee Schedule Use of Facilities. I'm going to hand that back over to Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, in our Policy and Labor Committee meeting, we discussed Policy 1500, which is about school facility use and that process. Included in that is a breakdown of six categories that are different groups that use our facilities. Thank you. I feel like I can have these memorized, we've talked about this a lot. Category 1 would be school-sponsored activities, until our basketball game or a volleyball game, obviously, we're not charging our own organizations of rental fee or associated costs. Category 2 would be our PTO, booster clubs, project graduation committee, again, no rental fees or associated costs. When it comes to town departments using our facilities, an example would be Park &amp; Rec, they are only paying associated costs. Category 4, currently, what we have, these are nonprofit organizations within our town, some of our sports groups like Waze or Lacrosse, and they're only paying associated costs. One of the things that we recommended in our earlier meeting was to add a small rental fee on top of that. And then, category 5 are for-profit organizations within town where there's a rental fee and associated costs, and then, category 6, out-of-town organizations where there's a rental fee and associated costs. That fee schedule that was proposed, that I'm proposing tonight, really looks at how we are asking organizations to pay fees based on that schedule, based on those different categories. And so, what we did, I pulled a team together where we looked at the associated cost first, that was the first place that we wanted to target. Associated costs, based on our board policy, we're really looking at costs that include but aren't limited to the fees for any custodial or maintenance that happens either during that event or even following that event, and then, of course, any environmental costs, the cost to light the room or the space, heating and air, and all of those associated costs. And so, our past practice has been to only charge groups associated costs when it comes to custodial or maintenance overtime, but we felt like it would be prudent for us to look at ways that even during school hours, when there's a custodian or maintenance people on staff, that their responsibilities are increased because of these activities happening within the building or on our fields, and to develop associated costs related to that. The other place that we looked was at rental fees. And so, in our current practice, all of the many groups that are currently using our facilities, in most cases, were not paying any rental fees. We felt like this was a missed opportunity for generating revenue, and so the fee schedule that's proposed has a rental fee that's associated with categories 4, 5, and 6, with our out-of-town groups, category 6, paying the most in rental fees, and then scaling that back to our in-town nonprofit groups. When we look at these two potential streams of revenue, the associated costs, we feel like that's a good opportunity for us to put that money right back into our facilities budget, to cover materials and human resource costs with taking on those additional duties. When it comes to the rental fees, we felt like this was a great opportunity for us to think about how we're funding some of our long-term capital projects. One of the things I'm very excited about being superintendent in this district is our great facilities. We want to maintain these great facilities, and that costs money, and we want to continue to build partnerships with our community groups in using our facilities, and make sure that they have facilities available to them and to our students that are high-quality. And again, we felt like it was fiscally responsible when we're considering how we're using taxpayer dollars to do that work. As we were developing this fee schedule, we looked at a number of other districts and looked at their fees to run some comparative numbers. So, we looked at Plymouth, Region 1, Region 10, Woodland, Nogatuck, and Oxford. And so, what we did was looked at their fees. Other districts had category differentiations that were very similar to ours, and we wanted to look at districts that were around our size or had facilities that were comparable. If we took our usage from the 2017-2018 school year and used these other districts as kind of comparisons, we saw potential revenue from $39,000, roughly $39,000, to upwards as much as $225,000. And so, we felt like this was a really good opportunity for us to think about, how do we do this in a more responsible way, but then also, how do we create a fee schedule that doesn't put too much tax on our groups that we have these great partnerships with? So, our fee schedule, we decided that for year one, that we would focus primarily on our athletic facilities, especially our turf fields. We know that maintenance for our turf fields, it costs about $14,000 a year just for maintenance for those two fields, and with our grass fields, we're looking at about $20,000 a year. And so, we felt like that it makes sense for these groups who are using our facilities to help share some of the load of those costs. When I take our numbers that we're recommending on our fee schedule and plug them into usage for last year, we're looking at potentially somewhere north of $26,000 annually. We felt like that's a good start to really generating some long-term revenue to offset costs for capital improvement projects.
Any questions or comments? Go back to Harrison on this. Tom?
One quick thing, you know, we have our partners, when they're charged to use our turf fields, you know, as responsible partners, we want to make sure that they're maintained properly. Then, we have professionals come in and break the rubber infiltration back into them, so that you get less injuries by doing that. So, I think being responsible, these fees make sense, so that we can be assured that these partners that come in to use our fields are safe and that we want it to worry about issues related to that maintenance. So, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
So, I would just like to add, I know, for those of you at the Policy and Labor Committee meeting, please forgive me for the repetition, but I just, first of all, the information that you provided, comparing all of the other districts, Oxford, Nogatuck, Woodland, Region 1, and 10, and Plymouth, what they're currently charging, and to think that we've been charging zero for all of these, you know, we can't support and subsidize all of these, particularly outside agencies that come into Watertown to use our fields that are for-profit themselves, and we've been carrying that burden for a long time, and we are, in our area, the only district who does not charge for those categories. And the fees that you came up with is a good place to start. I feel like it's fair, and it's not, if you look at what Oxford is charging compared to ours, it's really incredible. So, I thank you for the background information on this, too, and given our past history with the referendum and the tight budgets and the lean years, and how much more expensive things are getting, and the mandates are continuing to come in, we have to find fair and reasonable ways to bring in revenue, and this is certainly an area where I'm really happy to see it being done. Anything else on the fees? Okay, so, we would like to, later in the evening, take a vote on this, so if you have any outstanding questions on this, or comments or concerns, now would be the time, otherwise we will move on in the agenda. Good? Everybody's good? Okay, I'm going to hand it back over to you for item H, presentation.
Thank you. So, we're really excited tonight to talk about, you know, this whole theme with, facility use is really about many of the partners that we have across our community. Tonight, we're excited to talk about one of our partners at Post University, and I have Chris Brown and Dr. Jessica Limos here to talk about this collaborative program. Chris?
How come?
So, this evening, Dr. Limos and I will give you some information about a new program that began at the start of this school year, which is a collaborative program for our students who have completed their high school program, so they're generally between the ages of 18 to 21, who have the potential to be successful in college, but weren't quite ready to transition fully to a college without support. So, these are children who continue to receive specialized instruction or special education services under the auspices of Watertown Public Schools, but their program is provided on the campus of Post University. And they also, in addition to getting their education and an introduction to college, are doing worksite training or employment training at work sites that we arrange through the school district for them. This area, or this group of students, is a group of students that there aren't many programs out there for, and when Jessica started with us last fall, one of the things she and I discussed was seeing if we could put a program in place. Actually, Dr. Limos did all the work, she just said to me, "Is this a good idea?" And I said, "Yes," and she got it all in place, so she should take all the credit for getting this in place for us this school year. So, Dr. Limos will give more details about this, and then I'll talk a bit about the finances at the end.
Thank you. So, I move around a lot, I'm sorry. If you can't hear me, please let me know. So, as Mr. Brown was just saying, last year, probably around November-ish, I reached out to Post University, as I thought they were the perfect collaborator for this program. They work a lot with our College and Career Center, already involved here at Watertown High School. They're local, they're involved in our community, and so I thought they would be the perfect university to partner with, to look at this population of students that we have a responsibility to continue to provide services for. So, the idea is, the whole mission behind this program is to be able to provide students with the opportunity to move forward in a natural environment and continue to work on their skills. It doesn't necessarily make the most sense to... It doesn't necessarily make the most sense to these students to practice being an adult in an adult world while sitting still within the walls of this high school. So we are looking for the opportunity of where can we collaborate and partner with people to provide the most authentic experience in real-life learning. So these next two quick slides, there are 16 core transition skills that the Connecticut State Department of Education has put in place that as a school district, we are responsible for looking at each of these 16 skills and then identifying where our students are and looking at how are we going to help them grow in each of these 16 areas. And they range from things such as being able to talk about your own strengths and needs, all the way to being able to be a leader and affect positive social change. So they range in a variety of different areas. But again, we start working on these here at the high school right away, right when students come in their freshman year, and even Swift starts working on them at the middle school. But the idea is being able to generalize those skills, work in a natural environment, and have the opportunity to grow and see how it all sort of plays out in the real world. So that was just the second part of those 16 skills. So now, like Mr. Brown was just saying, we have two components to the program. There's a post-secondary component, which also includes some community participation, and then the employment component, which also includes community participation. And our students have the opportunity to receive college credit while they're at Post University. They take a transition program course, which is where they get their IEP or their special education service needs met. And then they also take two college-level courses per semester. So when students leave this program, they leave with having four college, the opportunity to earn four college courses' worth of credits. And most of the courses that they're signing up for are three-credit courses. So we work with them on campus. There's been a certified special education teacher that's been hired, that's at Post University, that Post University has hired because they're committed to making sure that this program is successful for our students. And they work closely with me. I work with Mary, our contact over there, at least weekly, where we talk and get, I get updates on all of the students. And they have the opportunity, just as any other student at Post University would. So they participate in all the clubs, all the activities. They have access to counseling services if they need to, the tutoring center, the library. They're having a bus trip to the casino, whatever it may be. They have access, well, that's what's going on coming up soon. So whatever, whatever any other Post University student has, that's what they have access to. And that's really its authentic experience, providing them with the opportunity to make good decisions with our support of what they can do moving forward after they leave Watertown Public Schools. So they're on campus three days a week, and then two days a week, they're in the community. And they're in the community at different businesses where they are working on employability skills, soft skills, learning all of those skills that sometimes are hard to really sit and role-play or practice. You really need to get on the site and in the job to really experience all of the different things that come up day-to-day, and then work through any potential hiccups as they come along. And then quickly, I'm a very visual person, so I just wanted to provide everyone with an idea of what, this is just a sample schedule of what students may experience. And, okay, there's a lot of blank spots there. And I wanted to explain that that's very purposeful in planning, that we're so used to a bell ringing and then telling us sort of where to go next and what to do. And students, I found, in all of my previous experience, that's, the classes, the college classes, aren't necessarily the part that gets in a lot of, in their way. It's all of that other stuff of managing their time, staying organized, knowing what resources to use in between those unstructured times, how to socially get involved on campus. So we purposely fill, well, don't, I guess, fill, but not fill, a student's schedule with the opportunity to really develop all of those 16 skills that we talked about earlier in the presentation, and have the time to practice them in the real-world experience. I know that was really fast. But before I let Chris come back up and talk about any of the, the financial piece of it, does anyone have any questions about the program?
So I would imagine that a student that would go to our Transition Academy would be participating in this, or is it one or the other?
It's, it's a different type of program. And right now, and right now, it's one or the other. But it's an individualized basis, and we meet individual student needs. So I would say that if a student comes as a recommendation, saying where we're not sure, or they need a little bit of what both programs offer, I think we make decisions based upon student needs. And there's no reason why I don't think they couldn't participate in one and then the other, or sort of hybrid the two in between. But the big difference is the students that participate in this program are typically, typically students that have the ability to go to a post-secondary college or university. And there's some more organizational, executive-functioning, social, emotional concerns that are involved that we need to sort of work on, where the students in the WTA are more focused, their goals, their post-school outcome goals are more on becoming active members in their community through work. So I think it depends on the student goals, and then we focus in and build a program based on those goals.
So we're really addressing more students' needs by adding this program?
Yes. And so that's, it's been more and more coming down, I'm, transition is my area that I love. It's where I do all of my most, that's where I, whenever I have extra time, I research stuff about transition planning. And so for me, it's been a long time, a decade of time at least, that I've been doing this sort of thing. But if you talk to other school districts, like Mr. Brown had said, this is already, people are saying, a model program in the state of Connecticut, and it, we're not even a full year through. It's also a place where the State Department of Education is spending more and more time in looking at making sure that school districts are not only being compliant with the law, but also providing quality as part of that, because it's not enough just to be compliant. So.
Good. Chair. How many students are in there now?
Currently, we have six Watertown students attending the program.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
The transportation to and from Post.
That is provided by the district as well. And I think when we, we talk a little bit more, we can get in, more in-depth, be, again, because these students are still Watertown Public School students, because they still have been identified as students who continue to need special education support, the transportation is provided, and through our, through the department, the Special Education Department.
Any other questions for Dr. Lemos?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. I won't walk around. So I just wanted to briefly talk to you about the finances. One of the things for this program is that it provides high-quality programming at a very nominal cost to the school district for these students. As I said at the beginning, there are very few programs that prepare students who have had special ed services to transition to college. There is a program at Mitchell College, which is in New London, Connecticut, and the program is called Thames Academy. And that's the comparable, comparable program on a college campus that I would compare our program to. The only thing that makes our program better, besides the cost, is that the Thames Academy program does not have a employability or work component. It's only academic component. So we are covering all the Connecticut core transition goals by having both post-secondary education training and employability training. Now, the cost for us is $3,500 per student per year. So with six students, it's costing us $21,000. If we were to send a student to Thames Academy, it would be over $53,000 for a single student for the year. Room and board is required, that's a part of the cost. So we are, have a potential savings of nearly $300,000 by having this program here for our students with Post. That's not to say that every one of these six children would go to the Thames Academy. Some, in fact, you know, 10 years ago, five years ago, a lot of these children would have graduated at the end of their 12th grade year, and then tried to make it in community college or tried to make it at a four-year college without the supports we're offering. And many wouldn't have continued because they would have found it too hard. And the difficulty with that, I think, for all of us, is that we have these young people with talents and skills, but they need a bit more support to use those talents or skills. So without a program like this, we're looking at lifetimes of missed opportunity for large numbers of children. In Watertown, it's six children this year, but across the state, it's large numbers of children. So at a, at a very reasonable cost, this provides an opportunity for young people who aren't so sure that they could handle college, to have the opportunity to try it and find out that they're successful. Post's goal with this, when Jess, Jessica and I met with them back in the winter, was for the students to finish this program and then enroll in Post. And they have a, there's a special cost benefit for those students if they're going to continue at Post, and I can't remember the number. But they don't have to go to Post. They could leave Post after getting the skills they need and go to Nogatuck Valley, or to Southern Connecticut, or to a private college. But Post would like them to stay, and that they're committed to that. So that's a good part of the program. So I, you know, I do think that the finances of these programs are always important, and I think we are very fortunate that Post was, when Jessica approached Post and did all this legwork, they were fully on board right from the get-go. They are really committed to partnering with local area towns. The other thing we should mention is Region 16, Prospect, Beacon Falls, and Middlebury, Southbury are also having students participate in this program. They're paying Post that tuition, not us. Post is managing that piece of it.
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry. One of the other things I think is a real benefit, and it is down on, on the bottom of this slide here, to make sure that it's pointed out, that having been doing this for several years in the state of Connecticut, one of the things, even though there are some really good programs out there across the state, there's a handful of programs, one of the things that I hear from families when they come back home is they made all these wonderful networks and connections in New London, or in wherever. And so then they come back to Watertown, Connecticut, and where do they move from there? Because they don't have that, those roots made or connected in the employment world that they've gotten into, or with the support system at the college. So being able to be here and be at home and make those connections here is a really big benefit for these families and these students.
Just, I mean, just like for all of us as adults, networking is important. And for, for these students who have worked real hard to build their skills, they've done it with support. And for them to have to go a great distance and then come back here without that support is kind of unfair to put them in that position. So it's, it's, you know, just a win for everybody to have the program here, and for the children to be, young people to be close to their community. Any questions? All right. Thank you for letting us share this. We're, we're really thrilled with it, and it's been, gotten off to a great start.
Thank you, both of you, for your presentation. This is really exciting stuff. I mean, the fact that we're able to offer this now to a whole new generation of students in Watertown, Ohio, is, is pretty exceptional. So I appreciate that. Harrison?
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you both for your work on this. We know that this is, we have strong programming like this. We're able to have it when we're building on things that have been happening so well in our district. And I think one of the things that we've done well across the district is trying to meet the needs of our students all the way across the continuum. I think that's really strong in our community. We have an adult program for adults with special needs that just kind of launched over the last week, and I was really excited to be there to see that happen. Of course, there's great work happening at the Transition Academy already that we're building on. And so this is just another example of the importance of strong partnerships and the importance of learning lessons and building on what you already have. So I'm very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda to item I, public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? If you do, please step up to the microphone, state your name and street address.
My name is Mike Magus. I'm at 77th Circuit Avenue, here in Watertown. And let me start by saying, Dr. Harrison, thank you for taking the suggestions that I made at the last minute regarding possibly naming the natory method Gary Smith seriously. Much appreciated that you and the board discussed this and are looking into the matter. What I did is I reached out over the last week or so, two weeks, to some parents in the swim community. Jen DeJesus is here. She's a mom that's very involved and, you know, looking forward to positive things happening to the, not only the community, but also primarily the swim community. You might recognize her daughter, Kelsey DeJesus, one of the best athletes here at Watertown High School in all state. You might say, Kelsey. What they've done is they've reached out to a lot of the parents within the swim team for now, and they started a petition drive. It's in its very infancy stages. They have a couple hundred signatures right now, which I'll be happy to present to you shortly. But, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction. We'd love to see this happen with Gary Smith being the natory in that part of the facility being named after him. Oh, if I didn't know it was on, I would have spoke louder.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? I don't need the mic. Oh, okay. You're good? I got to repeat everything again? I got a slideshow. I could do the slideshow, too. But no, thank, I, I don't know where I left off, but thank you for that. They have really stepped to the plate and started this petition drive. We'll be happy to keep it going. We could, you know, we know there's thousands of people that would support this initiative, and, you know, we would just like to see it move forward and, at some date, come to fruition. But by you starting this ball rolling, we appreciate that greatly. So that's all I really wanted to say tonight. I wanted to present this to you on behalf of the parents and the athletes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We are now going to move on to item J, policies. So the Policy and Labor Committee, under the direction of Chair Vic Visenzi, met earlier this evening and reviewed the policies that are listed on the agenda. We are going to go through those now and see if there are any further questions. We will consider which policies we'd like to vote on, or go for a second reading and vote on at a following meeting. First policy is the nondiscrimination policy. The only changes to this, which is Series 1000, have been the update under the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act. The way that it has affected our nondiscrimination policy is any reference to the words genetic information have been reviewed, have been rescinded, and the names of the policy, the public acts have been updated and eliminated when necessary. Are there any questions on that revision? Okay. The second one is policy under Series 1000, visitors, policy regarding visitors and observations in schools. This policy has been revised, it is not a new policy, concerning visitors and observations in schools in accordance with the Connecticut State Department of Education's 2018 Guidelines Regarding Independent Education, Educational Evaluation at Public Expanse and In-School Observation. The addition to this policy- The addition to this policy reserves the Watertown Public Schools' right to limit observations of students under current and proposed placements. Any of the language that has been added to this reflects that. Any questions on the changes and additions to this policy? Moving on to the use of facilities. As Dr. Harrison pointed out when he was discussing the fee structures, Policy fifteen hundred, Use of School Facilities, the only change we've made that is being proposed this evening, as you know, is to Category Three under Section D on page three of that policy. It adds the word rental fee to Category Four. It currently says associated costs. Any questions on that? And that is the only change to that policy. The next one, Reports of Suspected Abuse or Neglect of Adults with an Intellectual Disability or Autism Spectrum Disorder. This policy revisions coincides with Public Act eighteen ninety-six, where it adds licensed behavior analysts to the list of mandatory reporters. It shortens the reporting period to no more than forty-eight hours, it used to be seventy-two, after there is reasonable suspicion of abuse or neglect. And it also clarifies that unsuccessful attempts to make a report of neglect or abuse during the weekend or a holiday shall not be considered a violation of the law under certain circumstances. Again, that's just changing it according to the new Public Act. It used to be seventy-two hours for reporting, it's now forty-eight. Any questions on that? Moving on to Reports of Suspected Abuse or Neglect of Children or Sexual Assault of Students by School Employees Under Series four thousand. This policy has been revised concerning child abuse, neglect, and sexual assault reporting in accordance with Public Act eighteen seventeen and eighteen sixty-seven. It adds licensed behavior therapists to the list of mandatory reporters. It provides for the electronic filing of reports to the Department of Children and Families, and provisions concerning electronic filing. The provisions concerning the electronic filing of these reports are not effective until October ninth of two thousand and nineteen, but in our district, we have already been doing this in practice. So our reporting is done electronically. Would you like to add anything to that?
Sure. I mean, I think this policy, the spirit of it, is really tightening up this process to make sure that we are taking this very seriously, something that we spent a lot of time talking about in our district and in practice. I think we're already here in a lot of ways.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to Employment Checks Under Series four thousand Personnel. The Employment Checks policy has just been revised to add an address to a new statutory exception to the applicability of the background check requirements for certain employees of adult education programs. It also includes minor revisions for clarity and spelling. So, if, just bear with me one moment. What that means is the only change that has been made are clerical changes, removing the word board and replacing it with district, and adding a Section B to the inapplicable area under Section nine. That Section B, where it says a person employed by the district as a teacher for a non-credit adult class or adult ed activity who is not required to hold a teaching certificate for his or her position, those, the policy is inapplicable to them on employment checks. And that is the only update, other than the statutes listed at the end of that policy. Are there any questions on that? Moving on to Plan for Minority Educator Recruitment. This is a, again, existing policy that we already have under Series four thousand. It just changes the title to Plan for Minority Educator Recruitment, and updates the name of the act at the bottom of the page. It is now Act eighteen thirty-four, as opposed to sixteen forty-one. Those are the only revisions to that policy. Are there any questions? The next one is the Attendance Truancy and Chronic Absenteeism. I'm sorry. No, it is not. It is the Administration of Student Medications in Schools. The policy concerning the administration of meds in schools to students has been revised in accordance with Public Act eighteen dash one eighty-five. This clarifies that students with life-threatening allergic conditions may possess, self-administer, or possess and self-administer medication at school under certain conditions. Further, the act adds required training for bus drivers concerning the emergency administration of epinephrine to students with life-threatening allergic reactions. Are there any questions on this policy? Is there anything you'd like to add, Dr. Harrison, to this one? The next one is Drug and Alcohol Use by Students, Policy under Series five thousand. This is only a revision to be made in accordance with Public Act eighteen one eighty-five, which permits students to possess and self-administer the medication under certain circumstances. The new revisions clarify that possession of a medication in accordance with the board policy is not subject to discipline. So when we talk about drug and alcohol abuse by students in the schools, we are not including drugs that they are taking for medical reasons as discipline. And that just clarifies that for us. Are there any questions with that? Moving on to Student Attendance Truancy and Chronic Absenteeism. This policy has been revised to provide an option for districts to refer truant students to a youth service bureau. Referrals to youth service bureau may be made with parent consent after a district has exhausted all available options to solve problems of truancy and/or continuous or overt defiance of school rules and regulations. So other than updating some of the public acts that are no longer in effect and changing the word public schools to district, this simply revises it to allow us to refer these students to the youth service bureau. Are there any questions regarding that policy? Okay. The next one, Management Plan and Guidelines for Students with Food Allergies and/or Lysogen Storage Disease. Again, staying in the five thousand, Series under Students. We've only made minor revisions to this plan and guidelines in accordance with the Public Act eighteen one eighty-five and some typographical issues. Relative to this policy, the act requires that the State Department of Education revise its guidelines concerning life-threatening food allergies and/or lysogen storage disease. There will be further revisions to this model, and will have those passed on to us from Shipman and Goodwin once the State Department of Education amends the guidelines, and we expect them to do that within the year. In the meantime, we have made the proper revisions to this policy. Any questions? Okay, the next one, Administrative Regulations Regarding Health Assessment Screenings and Oral Health Assessments. In light of Public Act eighteen one sixty-eight, we have a new requirement for oral health assessments of students who initially enter our public schools and who are entering either grade six or seven and either grade eight or nine. Parents and guardians may provide for the oral health assessment, or schools may conduct such assessments under certain conditions. So this policy is updated to include the oral, the new regulations mandated by the state for oral health assessments. We have not received any guidelines as to what those assessments will look like, but these will be, I'm sure they'll be coming forth from the state in the meantime. Are there any questions on this? I would like to add a personal note on this, that this is another unfunded mandate that now requires us to make sure that our students have oral health assessments and then provide them if they do not. The next one is Administrative Regulations Regarding Immunizations. We have corrected the link that's listed on here, that has the required immunizations listed, and then there's some certain clerical changes to the policy, and that is all. So it's just an updated link where parents can go and find the list of state-required immunizations. Any questions? Okay, moving right along, Restraint and Seclusion, physical restraint and seclusion of students and use of exclusionary time out. This policy has been revised concerning the physical restraint and seclusion of students in accordance with Public Act eighteen fifty-one, Section four. And through this Public Act, the General Assembly has revised the definitions of physical restraint, seclusion, and adds a new definition of exclusionary time out. It also requires that all districts by January one, two thousand and nineteen, implement procedures for the use of exclusionary time out with students, and it clarifies that seclusion may only be used in an emergency circumstance. I would like to turn this over to Dr. Harrison for a little bit more explanation on that.
Sure. One of the things that we discussed briefly in the Policy and Labor Committee meeting was that this, the practices outlined in this policy are practices that we've already discussed with our administrators. We surely do not use seclusion of students or exclusionary time as a general practice. It is not our go-to strategy. However, we've updated our staff and our teams on when it is used, what the proper guidelines are. There's a provision in this policy that really points out if it is, if there's a need that arises for a student to be excluded a number of times, I think it's four times, within a thirty-day period, that will be a trigger for the team to come together and look at different strategies, because surely that's not one that we want to use on any regular basis. In that, earlier this evening, we also discussed with Mr. Brown being here, that our staff is trained on our de-escalation and restraining processes. There's an initial training that's pretty lengthy, a couple of days of training, and then they're recertified on an annual basis to make sure that we are also in compliance.
Any questions on that? Moving on to Student Discipline, again, in Series five thousand. The only revisions to our student discipline policy is those that are in accordance with Public Act eighteen thirty-one, which just removes any reference to the Connecticut Juvenile Training School from the Connecticut statute, Connecticut's expulsion statute. So that's the only update. And then we have inserted some models for individualized learning plans and student discipline documents, which board members have not received, but we will make sure that you receive them. But as far as the student discipline policy, the only change to it is removing the words "the Connecticut Juvenile Training School" from the Connecticut's expulsion statute Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to Student Records, FERPA. This policy has been slightly revised to conform to recent amendments to the Student Data Privacy Law under Public Act eighteen one twenty-five. There's also been some minor additional revisions to clarify certain circumstances when districts may disclose educational records, and we have added the individualized learning plans to our optional record categorization system. So in this policy, again, the only changes are to some verbiage. It adds verbiage in relation to video or audio-recorded or electronic messages in regards to the release of records, and removes language that is no longer in effect in accordance with the Public Act. Just want to make sure that that is all. Okay, there is language that's been added on page twenty-one that's relevant to if the district uses in a consultant service to work on any part of our school system that includes any student records or data. And there is language associated with that that's been updated. Are there any questions on that? Okay, the last one is a brand-new policy, Service Animals, and I'm going to hand that over to Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. This is a new policy. It's a policy that we don't have, well, currently, obviously, if we don't have it, that's what makes it new. But it's related to Connecticut general statutes as far as, and federal law around service animals. Essentially, what the policy does is it defines a service animal as a dog or the possibility of a miniature horse, and lays out what that training is supposed to look like to support a student who may need to have a service animal during the school day. We have a student at the high school who is in need of a service animal, and so we wanted to bring this policy forward in preparation for that, and sharing information with staff and with our families. One thing to note in this policy is that, obviously, a service animal has to go through significant training, which includes being housebroken, as you can imagine, that will be important as we're in schools. And then the last part of it, this policy, is about conflicting disabilities, and so it lays out a process for what happens if we have a student who needs a service animal, but there's also another student with a significant allergy, and how to weigh those two needs against each other. We know that this is a new policy, and this will be a new practice for us. We anticipate having to come back with some minor revisions to this policy, but this was a model policy from Shipman and Goodwin that we wanted to promote and bring forward to have in place in preparation for this change, this happening in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. In the Policy and Labor Committee meeting, if I may, Cheryl brought up some good points about making sure that we're, you know, protecting all students in addition to the student that's coming in, and I think that this policy outlines the ways in which we will do that, and I look forward to some revisions over the next year as we learn from this. Okay, moving on to, thank you, moving on to Item K, Committee Reports, from Mrs. Kathy Rinaldi. There is no report. Mr. Visensi, Policy and Labor?
Yes, we met this evening at six o'clock, and we discussed all the new policies and revised policies that you just spoke of, and we also reviewed the fee schedule for our buildings for eighteen and nineteen. And we'll be voting on them shortly.
Thank you. And Mr. Lambert, Budget and Finance?
No report at this time.
And back to you for Facilities, PBC, and Operations.
Along with the PBC, Hemingway Park Town Hall, or Hemingway Town Hall, rebuilding. I have a short report on that. We are working on curtain drains and footings. They've been installed along the front of the building, in the main entry. Curtain drains installed along the gymnasium exterior wall to the rear of the building to catch basins at the rear of the gymnasium with piping, and also grading of exterior areas where piping has been installed. The interior, the gymnasium, has been completely demolished. All the stage and the gym floor and lighting and piping have been removed. Concrete subflooring has been opened, and piping locations in bathrooms, sprinkler and electro piping has been installed and backfilled. Cast iron above ground piping has also been started. Floor framing has been installed in the area where stage was located. And the HVAC ductwork hangers have started to be installed, and a large amount of ductwork has been delivered and is being stored on-site. Lower level of gym has also been completely demoed, including asbestos floor tile abatement, with all clearances received. Wall-supporting floor structure for concrete pore of upper gym have been constructed. Lighting walls, ceilings, and some piping have been demoed in Building B. New radon test of entire lower level, including gym and current Parks and Recreation Department area, has been completed. All tests came back with acceptable levels identified. Exterior lighting at lower-level parking area has been replaced with temporary lighting until inspected. until inspection of lighting run can be accomplished. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I know that there has been a lot of progress on the building that you clearly outlined, and I'm assuming they continue to plan on moving in all of the offices into the space that we will eventually occupy until the rest of the building is done, and then they will move out and we will move in. So then the Board of Education will be the last to be moved into Hemingway. Okay. Thank you. Moving on, back, back to you, sir, for a we did budget. On behalf of Mr. Mikowski, there is no report for governance and community engagement. With that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Wilk for Communications.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. Report from Board Chair, Item M. On 9/12, I met with Senator Berthel and Mr. Evans from Theraplan. Theraplan presented Watertown Public Schools with a donation of $3,000 that we will hopefully accept this evening. We are very grateful for this business's continued support of our school district, as this is the third year in a row that Mr. Edmonds, Evans, has made a significant donation to our district. Watertown Public Schools will use this money for professional learning on emotional intelligence. I would like to encourage all area businesses to consider supporting Watertown Public Schools through financial contributions and future collaborations. We have an incredibly supportive community, and our local businesses are committed to making a difference where they live and work. That has been proven to us over and over. Business strategies that include supporting local public education do strengthen the community and, more importantly, the potential workforce for the area. On 9/12, I attended the Future Ready Leadership Team, where we worked on a district self-assessment on the strengths and areas of improvement related to curriculum instruction, student assessment, and how it aligns with our instructional goals. On 9/12, I attended the Watertown High School Open House, and then that weekend, the Fall Festival. Just a small note on the Fall Festival. I was excited to see so many of our administrators, our coaches, our, our teachers, our parents, there, not only because they may live and work in our community, but coming from outside to support our students' activities in the Watertown community. On September 17, I continued negotiations with Vic Vicenzi and Tom Lambert and Mr. DiStazio and Dr. Harrison with the WEA. Thank you to all of you for once again dedicating your time to this continued process. On October 10, at 6:00 PM, the Watertown Foundation will be holding its 93rd Annual Meeting and Dinner at the Watertown Golf Club. This year's keynote speaker will be Robert Burns, Executive Director of the Mattituck Museum. You may ask why I'm bringing up the Watertown Foundation Dinner. I bring it up because I'm not only a member of that, but I want to just remind everybody that last year, the foundation awarded $55,000 in scholarships for higher education to 26 Watertown students, and awarded $82,000 in grants to 36 area nonprofit organizations. The foundation is the only foundation dedicated solely to the Watertown and Oakville community. I look forward to continuing the board's support of their extraordinary efforts on our students and communities' behalf. Dr. Harrison, Budget and Finance Chair Tom Lambert, Business Manager Tom DiStazio, and I are working on language for a much-needed Board of Ed Capital Improvement Fund and possibly a non-lapsing account. Both of these items will be on the agenda of an upcoming Board of Education Budget and Finance meeting before presenting these items to the Board of Ed for discussion. Should the board decide to vote to recommend, the next step would be to present our recommendations to the Town Council for approval, as all capital improvement funds, funds and non-lapsing accounts must be approved by the Town Council. I'd like to recommend that the board members review Policy 5033-R related to residency, because at an upcoming meeting, the board will also be reviewing its current residency policy related to eligibility requirements, including the guidelines for establishing permanent residence. So in preparation, Policy and Labor Chair Vic Vicenzi and I recommend that we review 5033-R when you have a chance. It's available to you in your policy books and also online through the Board of Ed policy link on the Watertown Public School website. On December 17, for board members, if you want to mark in your calendar, December 17, at 6:30, the board is going to participate in our annual workshop with Shipman and Goodwin. These workshops are designated to keep members fluent in the areas that pertain to board roles and responsibilities and the current legislation affecting our work now and in the future. This year's session will focus on those matters. I thought we'd do it a little bit differently this time, though. In addition, I'd like to add to their presentation areas that you request, because you're interested in as it relates to your role. Please email me specific areas you'd like to cover. For example, if you'd like to learn more about union negotiations or the Freedom of Information Act, or any other pertinent topics to our job, please let me know. And I'd also like to remind everyone of the website that Shipman and Goodwin has. It's ct-schoollaw.com, which is solely dedicated to covering all emerging school law issues. So it's a really great place to stay current on any upcoming legislation related to boards of education. Again, that is ct-schoollaw.com. Lastly, if you will notice in the agenda, we will be holding an executive session to discuss safety and security plans. I want to remind everybody of our own policy, 1340, on school security and safety, and I'd like to read a paragraph from that. "Security and safety plans should be kept secure and will only be provided to the Board of Ed, school staff and administration, members of the school's security and safety committees, members of state and local law enforcement, first responders, local municipal officials, or other authorized personnel by the Board of Ed or superintendent." This is pursuant to a general, Connecticut General Statute 1-210B19, and the plan will not be available to the public. That is a, that is a general statute in the state of Connecticut, so I just want to remind the public that that is why those kinds of discussion happen in executive session. We certainly wouldn't want to discuss our plans publicly, because that would only be exposing us to potential security concerns. Moving on in the agenda, Item N, Action Items, Adoption of Items to Be Approved by Consent. Consideration of the Approval of the 1819 Fee Schedule. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the 2018-19 Facilities Fee Schedule effective January 1, 2019, as presented by Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 2, Consideration of the Approval of New and Revised Policies. Bear with me one moment, please. So the board had its Policy and Labor meeting earlier. We discussed policies. All of the people here were present. We discussed the new and revised policies that have been recommended by Dr. Harrison and Shipman and Goodwin. Are there any policies that were listed that are of concern or that you would like to not take a vote on today? Or is everybody comfortable with moving forward on voting on the policies discussed today?
Yes.
Okay. Then we shall go ahead. I ask for a motion on the nondiscrimination Policy 1140 and 1140R.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy Visitors, I'd like a motion on Visitors and Observations in School, 1600 and 1600R.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 1500, Use of School Facilities as Presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 4120, Abuse or Neglect of Disabled Adults as Presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 4130 as Presented on Child Abuse or Neglect Reporting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Employment Checks Policy 4040 as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 4100, Plan for Minority Staff Recruitment Revisions.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5010, Administration of Student Medications in Schools as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5011, New Policy, excuse me, Policy 5011, Administration Drug and Alcohol Use by Students as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5110 and 5110R, Attendance Truancy and Chronic Absenteeism Revisions as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5060, Food Allergies and/or Lysogen Storage Disease as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 500R-1, Health Assessments and Screenings as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5055R, Immunizations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5085 and 5085R, Restrain and Seclusion as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Policy 5120 and 5120R on Student Discipline as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student Records 5130 and 5130R as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And last but least, New Policy 5146 as Presented on Service Animals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 3, Consideration of the Approval of the Acceptance of a Gift. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the generous donation of $3,000 made by Mr. Evans of the Theraplan LLC in Watertown to be used for emotional intelligence training for Watertown Public School administrators, and a letter of appreciation be sent to the donor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to Item O, Future Agenda Items and Board Member Comments. Do any board members have any comments they'd like to make at this time, or any suggestions for future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to our last round of public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item Q. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of the discussion regarding Watertown Public Schools safety plans. Attending the executive session will be Dr. Harrison, Leslie Crotty, Janelle Wilk, Victor Vicenzi, Farrell Albino, and myself, Tom Lambert.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are now in, again, this executive session. Do any members of the board have to use the men's or ladies' room?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go to beds now.